Please read that item into the record.
Chair Hartman, members of the board. Departmental item number one is from the county executive office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19 update.
Welcome, Dr. DeRinosa.
Good morning. Good morning. The briefing topics that I'll be covering, I'll be giving your board an update on our quarterly demographics, an update on the anticipated rating from the blueprint for a safer economy, the health officer order that I anticipate will be released today, and an update on school waivers. This presentation today will look a little different. I chose not to display the usual graphs, the Santa Barbara COVID-19 by the numbers, because I'll be giving you a lot of graphs. And want to point you to, for the latest status, to our website, publichealthSBC.org, where the usual graphs are displayed under our surveillance metrics. The quarterly demographics, before I start, I'd like to give, introduce to your board Ms. Joy Kane, sitting beside me. Ms. Kane is our senior epidemiologist, and she and her team worked really hard to put together the set of report that you have in front of you. Unless otherwise noted, the population numbers used in this analysis are from the 2020 population from, projection from the California Department of Finance. All cases are laboratory confirmed for the SARS-CoV-2 virus via molecular assay, and federal inmates are excluded from this particular analysis. So the data that I'm about to present to you covers actually two quarters from March 1st through September 30th. This graph shows the number of COVID-19 tests conducted by month in Santa Barbara County from March 1st through September 30th. In the beginning of the pandemic, the availability of COVID-19 was very limited, with an increase in supply testing steadily increased from 1,684 total county-wide tests conducted in March to 40,516 conducted in July, which represents the peak of our testing. In August and September, testing numbers stabilized at approximately 30,000 per month. This graph shows the number of COVID-19 deaths conducted by month. Okay. Speeding up. Between March and September, the overall testing positivity was 5.6%. Testing positivity was around 5% in March and April, when testing was very limited. As the number of tests increased in May, testing positivity decreased to a low of 2%. Between June and July, testing positivity increased from 4.4% to a high of 8.4%. Testing positivity decreased in August to 6.7% and again in September for, to 3.7%. So I also overlaid the testing communication. In March and April, due to the limited testing availability, we followed CDC and CDPH guidelines, and testing was limited to priority groups. And these groups were hospitalized patients, symptomatic and asymptomatic health care workers, first responders, and other social services employees, or symptomatic and asymptomatic persons older than 65 years, as well as persons identified for public health contact investigation and disease control activities in high-risk settings. In May, we were able to obtain three OptumServe sites, and we launched those sites. And then the testing messaging became come-one, come-all. If you need to be tested, and if you'd like to be tested, we're open and available. And that was primarily also following CDPH guidelines. In June, the testing sites were heavily utilized by community members. So following, again, CDPH guidelines, we switched to a need-based testing messaging. If you are, have been exposed, and if you are symptomatic, please come get tested. In July, testing site continued on a need-based testing messaging because of the supply chain issues and the lab processing issues. Then in September, with the infusion of testing supply, increase in the ability of laboratories to process the samples, testing message shifted to a want basis. If you've been exposed, come get tested, and if you want to know your status, please come get tested. This graph depicts-
Supervisor Adam, have a question.
Dr. DeRinosa, and maybe the public doesn't understand, we don't get these graphs ahead of time. We have a special meeting on Mondays where we get these graphs presented to us instead of included in our normal packet. And so we don't have a chance, as the board, to really digest this material adequately, in my opinion. And yesterday, I asked for those notes you have on your slide to be incorporated onto this graph, and the one that I'm in receipt of here this morning does not have those notes on it. Did anybody else get those notes?
I think we all have the copy that's on the PowerPoint presentation.
I don't. Have any notes on bottom of mind? Is that seven? No, no, well, that's a different copy, okay. Well. Is this what you just gave me? We're not on that one, okay.
We'll get you the right one.
That one. Okay. My apologies.
Okay. Dr. DeRinosa?
This graph depicts the cumulative number of COVID-19 cases by age in Santa Barbara County. Each bi-weekly value represents the sum total of all the previously confirmed cases. As of September 30th, the 30- to 49-year-old age group had the highest number of COVID-19 cases, followed by the 18- to 29-year-olds. These younger adults make up a large proportion of workers in frontline occupations and are highly exposed, and highly exposed industries, putting them at risk of contracting COVID-19. The next age group with the highest number of cases was the 50- to 69-year-olds, followed by the 0- to 17-year-olds, and lastly, the 70-plus-year-olds. It is important to note that though the absolute number of 70-positive-year-olds is the lowest, this age group also make up a very small proportion of the population. The elderly had lower numbers of cases, likely because they are retired and are carefully following the stay-at-home orders. This figure compares the age groups of Santa Barbara County's population to the age groups of cases and deaths, and reveal several important trends. First, a greater proportion of cases versus the population were working-age adults aged 18 to 29-years, which representing 31% of cases versus 21% of the population. And 30- to 49-years, which represent 35% of cases versus their 24% of the population. Second, most deaths occurred among older adults, and this percent was disproportionately higher than the population. Of COVID-19 deaths, 27% were among 50- to 69-year-olds, and 66% were among 70-plus-year-olds. However, 50- to 69-year-olds made up 22% of the population, and 70-plus-year-olds only accounted for 11% of the population. Third, children accounted for fewer cases and deaths than their relative population. This should be noted that during, it should be noted that during the reporting period, most schools were closed for in-person classes. As Santa Barbara County schools start to reopen, it is possible that we will be seeing more cases attributed to children. Our department will closely monitor trends among children in these next few months. This graph describes age of cases in increments of 10 years. The group with the highest number of cases is the 20- to 29-year-olds, followed by the 30- to 39-year-olds, then the 40- to 49-year-olds. The 0- to 9-year-olds have the lowest number of cases. This slide shows the relative gender proportions of Santa Barbara County's population, COVID-19 cases and COVID-19 deaths. The gender of Santa Barbara County's population was approximately equal with 51% male and 49% female. During the reporting period, the gender of COVID-19 cases was similar to that of the population. However, the gender of deaths was slightly higher among males. Throughout our country and state, published data reports indicate that COVID-19 has disproportionately impacted communities of color, highlighting racial disparities. And we are seeing this disparity in Santa Barbara County as well. While Hispanics and Latinos accounted for 48% of Santa Barbara County's population, they represent 65% of COVID-19 cases and 55% of COVID-19 deaths. In contrast, whites represent fewer cases, 9%, compared to their population, 43%. Whites made up 39% of deaths. Many of these deaths occurred at skilled nursing homes and other congregate care settings, which have been highly impacted during this pandemic. While the SARS-CoV-2 is a novel virus, the disparate impact of COVID-19 pandemic in communities of color is rooted in the historic and ongoing social and economic inequalities that contribute to the observed racial disparities in health status. And this is the primary reason for the recent implementation of the health equity metric by CDPH. This graph represents all laboratory confirmed COVID-19 cases in Santa Barbara County through September 30th, disaggregated by occupation. The occupation with the most number of cases was agricultural workers. During the pandemic, there have been nine outbreaks associated with agricultural workers. The Santa Barbara County Public Health Department has worked closely with agricultural communities to contain the spread of disease. One example is our Housing for the Harvest program, which provides temporary housing for agricultural workers who need to isolate due to COVID-19. The retired and unemployed category is high due to the fact that skilled nursing homes and other congregate care settings have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. Other occupations with high frequencies included laborer, skilled, unskilled worker, healthcare worker, and restaurant/bar/food preparation. These workers in frontline occupations and highly exposed industries are less likely to be able to implement social distancing measures that prevent transmission, thus putting them at greater risk of contracting COVID-19. To describe the burden of disease in various communities, we have divided Santa Barbara County into 10 geographic regions. Communities with smaller populations were aggregated in order to comply with privacy and HIPAA regulations. This bar chart describes the geographic regions from highest to lowest case rates per 100,000 people using the 2010 U.S. Census data. To compare case rates among areas with different populations, the per capita calculation is made by dividing the cases in the area by its population, then multiplying the result by 100,000. At 4,189.8 cases per 100,000 people, North County unincorporated areas have the highest rate of COVID-19 infection. That being said, the total population and case counts in this region are relatively low. Santa Maria, with the highest case rate of 3,958.7 cases per 100,000, and the highest case count at 3,941, has been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. Lompoc has the third highest case rate at 1,477.3 per 100,000 and 846 cases. The city of Santa Barbara, the fourth highest, had the case rate of 1,333 per 100,000 and 1,224 cases. The remaining data for the geographic areas are also presented in the chart. Transmission symptomology and length of hospitalization. As of September 30th, the majority of COVID cases with a known transmission status can be attributed to a close contact and community spread. Close contact is defined as being within six feet of an infected person for at least 15 minutes from two days before illness onset or specimen collection date. Cases labeled as community spread are those in which the individual has not had known contact, has not had known close contact with an identified case. While the first cases in the country were linked to international travel, less than 1% of cases in Santa Barbara County were due to travel. The transmission status of 1.3% of cases was, as of yet, to be determined at the date of this report's publication. Should be noted that a large percent of cases, nearly 35%, had an incomplete transmission status. This percentage represents cases who lack information regarding transmission status. Symptomology of COVID-19 cases. This chart describes the cases that reported having any symptoms of COVID-19 compared to those that were asymptomatic, under investigation, and unknown. Early in the pandemic, testing was limited to those with symptoms. Since then, testing criteria has broadened. Approximately 75% of testers using our three OptumServe sites consistently report being asymptomatic. However, the true number of cases and percentage of asymptomatic cases is unknown since these residents may not seek testing. Length of stay among those hospitalized is presented in this graph. And I, this is an ongoing effort with our area hospitals. I want to thank the hospital teams for supporting us with our data requests. We have demographics today, and in the near future, I will be coming back and presenting comorbidities associated with hospitalizations. So this is the length of stay among those hospitalized. While the majority, 57.9% of hospitalizations, had a relatively short stay of 0 to 5 days, 11.7% had a length of stay greater than 20 days. The length of stay may indicate severity of disease and need for supportive care. Outbreaks. There have been a total of 59 outbreaks at congregate care settings in Santa Barbara County between March and September. These congregates' care settings included skilled nursing facilities, residential care facilities for the elderly, independent living facilities, intermediate care facilities, the Santa Barbara County Jail, the Lompoc Federal Correction Institute, homeless shelters, sober living homes, H2A housing, and other congregate settings. Following temporal trends of cases, congregate care setting outbreaks increased during the summer months. August had the highest number of congregate care setting outbreaks. Residential care facilities for the elderly accounted for the majority of active outbreaks by month, followed by skilled nursing facilities. Our conclusions and recommendations. From March through September, Santa Barbara County reported 8,199 cases. Santa Barbara County saw a wave of cases during the summer. The number of cases and testing positivity peaked in July, and they may be associated with the reopening of sectors and the summer holidays. The majority of cases was working adults from 18 through 49-years-old. Hispanic Latinos have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 in Santa Barbara County. Most common occupation for COVID-19 cases in our county is among farmworkers and those who work in ag. Frontline staff in healthcare, laborers, unskilled laborers, restaurant bar or food preparation workers also represent a large number of cases. North County unincorporated areas and the city of Santa Maria have the highest rates of disease, surpassing the county's average case rate. Of cases with known transmission status, the majority were close contact. Our recommendations include: To continue partnering with employment sectors and post-secondary schools to mitigate the spread of disease among 20-year-olds. To continue increasing prevention messaging to 20-year-olds. To monitor the health needs and risks among senior population. To partner with employment sectors to slow the spread of infection among frontline workers. And this means to support staff who need to isolate or quarantine, and to reinforce social distancing and masking in the job. Our recommendations also include limit gatherings. Partnering with CDPH for additional prevention strategies to mitigate sustained and/or repeated outbreaks in congregate settings. Continue to outreach prevention efforts in regions with the highest case rates. To monitor cases among youth and young adults as school resumes. Monitor mental health needs and promote community mental health resources. And I'll pause for questions before I go to the next segment.
Are there questions for Dr. DeRinosa? Supervisor Williams?
Well, you know, you obviously have a lot of recommendations, but I was trying to boil it down to the public, maybe the top three for folks who might be watching. And would it be fair to say that is continuing to limit gatherings? Because we know from our contact tracing that that has been a source of transmission. To immediately quarantine any members of the household that might be sick, right? Not just confirmed cases, but might be sick, because that has been the largest source, according to our contact tracing, is household transfers. And then continued use of basic precautions that, I mean, is there other ones that you want to just try to make it really obvious for folks beyond my three?
Supervisor Williams through the chair. No, you boiled it down correctly. I think the only thing I would add to that is that as we are seeing the 20-year-olds as the highest group, that we continue messaging the tools that we have, the social distancing, the no gathering, wearing face masks, especially to that population.
Supervisor Hartman?
When this first started, my biggest concern was people working at the grocery stores, because they, there was such a rush, and there were so many people constantly going through. But the grocery stores have been really vigilant about requiring patrons to wear masks, social distancing, plexiglass. So I don't see them up here. Do we, do we know anything about transmission and cases with grocery workers? And have these measures that they've taken helped them more than, say, some of the other workers?
Sure. Ms. Kane, do you have that information?
Yes, so we have been keeping an eye out on our frontline workers, including those working at grocery stores, and they have not risen to the top in terms of frequency of occupation. I can get those numbers for you at a later point if you're interested.
I just think there's a hidden message there, then, that we really can, by taking these measures, even though we exposed a lot, we can reduce the transmission.
Yes, I have to say that as someone who loves to grocery shop, I always look at the place, the grocery store, and really have to applaud grocery stores for the marking on the floor, the one-way entrance ingress and egress, and the plexiglass protecting the cashier. And you're absolutely right. Those are measures and tools that industries can use to mitigate and to contain.
Are there questions for Dr. DeRinosa? Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I just wanted everyone to know that we're working very hard with the college communities. And I just saw DA Dudley, she's part of the effort that's working on this, so I, this isn't going unaddressed.
Yes.
I had a question about Slide 16, which is the cases by transmission type. It's the information from the contract tracers. And I was struck by how many people apparently didn't answer the question about where they thought they got infected. Is that because they don't know and they were unclear? Or is that just not, well, being willing to answer those questions?
Would you like to take that, Ms. Kane?
So it's a combination of a variety of factors. One is that the question was skipped or missed in some of the cases, and we are working closer with our cases to get this information, as it's important to understand transmission.
Thank you for that, Ms. Kane. Any other questions at this time? Supervisor Adam?
I'm wondering if we go back to our slide on occupations.
Page 13 of the report.
13, there you go.
Figure 15.
Could we, could we possibly get, and this may be difficult for some occupations, but could we possibly, to put this into a context- use percentages of the people who work in that rather than the nominal number? Or alongside the nominal number to put that into context? Because if you have, my, my understanding is there's roughly 25,000 agricultural workers in, in Santa Barbara County. And I don't know what the relative comparison to that is to restaurants, bar, food, and retired unemployed. So, you know, that, that might be informative if we could add, add that.
Yeah, I, I want to just say that, that, that should inform us because, you know, say, things that are on the smaller end of the graph, if they're higher than the percentage of the amount of workers, then that should mean something to us, right? If, say, restaurant workers, if that's lower than the amount or at the amount of the workforce, then maybe that's not a cause for concern. But if it's higher than the percentage of, that they constitute of the workforce, then we go, wait a minute, something's going on there, right?
Yeah, at the same time, if, if it's lower than, maybe there's nothing going on there. And it's just a random draw of, of people. And I do think that, that the Hispanic community gets hit harder because they tend to, and, and agriculturals, employees as well, tend to live in, in more dense urban situations. And, and that's going to trend towards, or favor transmission.
Thank you for that. I think, are there any questions from Santa Maria?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Duranosa, if you just want to continue?
Blueprint for a safer economy. As you are, as you are aware, we have, this is the familiar graph of widespread, substantial, moderate, and minimal. And at the last row is the lowest HPI quartile index that was introduced roughly three weeks ago. This is anticipated, that CDPH will be releasing this at noon time. Our Santa Barbara County metrics, adjusted case rate stands at 4.2. New cases per day, unadjusted, is 4.3. Our positivity rate is at 2.4. And our health equity metric is 5.0. And this is the data for week ending in October 3rd. This is in another format describing the same thing. So our average daily number of tests during this rating period was 257.4, whereas the state median was 290, 239.21. So therefore, our 4.3 case rate was adjusted downward by .97 to arrive at our 4.2 as the final adjusted case rate. So I, we are happy to see that the case rate went down from the previous week of 5.8. Our testing positivity is at 2.4, a decrease from previous week. And we, this is a, the, the gold chart, the gold line is a new line that you have not seen before. And it describes the lowest HPI quartile percent test positivity since we are going to be held accountable to that rate as well. And I want to note here that 44% of our cases are attributed to census tracts in the bottom HPI quartile. In the HPI bottom quartile, we have 21 census tracts, with Santa Barbara having one, with Santa Maria having 11, Guadalupe, one. Large census tract that also includes the Vandenberg Air Force Base, one, Lompoc, four, and Isla Vista, three. And the total population in this lowest HPI quartile is 108, 118,957.
Supervisor Adam had a question.
Just to remind us what HPI is?
It's Healthy Places Index. Because we have been in the red tier for 14 days, K through 12 now have the option to reopen for in-person learning. And in addition to that, last Friday, the state issued guidance on gathering, allowing for some gathering, some private gathering to occur. Because what we know in our county as a transmission of disease, our health officer order anticipated to be issued later today will maintain that the current prohibition on gatherings for the next two weeks so that we continue to see the decrease in case rate and testing positivity. So we anticipate issuing this health officer order to allow schools and to prohibit gatherings by the end of today. I also want to give you a brief update on school waivers. So we have 29 approved school waivers. We currently have one school waiver at CDPH for their concurrence, and that is the Children's Montessori School of Lompoc. And we did receive a new school waiver, the Peabody Charter Elementary that we are processing. And that concludes my update for this week.
Well, thank you, Dr. Duranosa, and thank you, Ms. Kane, for this excellent report. Very comprehensive, a lot of material here. I know we have Supervisor Hartman has a question to ask.
Well, my question, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but listening to the radio on the drive in today, I think over half the states now have rising cases. And I was wondering if we have any sense of whether the virus is more active in cold weather? Or whether, you know, this is just maybe the first wave in cases, in states that hadn't seen it before? Or do we have any sense of what we might be seeing over the next months, given what we see in other countries and other states?
Sure. I think it's not necessarily that the virus is more active in the winter months, but what we worry about is that outdoor activities, outdoor convenings, outdoor gatherings are going to move indoors. So that is the worry as you move indoors and social distancing and face covering are not implemented. There will be an increased likelihood of increased cases. So we are worried about that. And another quick update that I forgot to mention earlier, you mentioned the ongoing activities to reach college age or the 20s. And so because Isla Vista is in one of our health equity metric region, we did, we did do a pop-up testing site event last Friday. And with 90% of the results coming in, we did see two positives. We are waiting for the remainder of the test results, but two positives from the 90% tests that, that we did. And we will be continuing to do the IV pop-up testing. We are going to be expanding on, to the 24th. So right now, we are doing, October 23rd and expanding to October 24th. We will be expanding to November 6th as well as November 7th. And these will be by appointments.
Dr. Duranosa, do you know approximately how many tests were done in that Isla Vista pop-up? So that we have a sense of the positivity rate. It sounds like it's very low with the positivity.
We had about 100 people signed up, but only 87 showed up for testing.
So you're in the 2% to 3% positivity rate, that's very consistent with the overall county numbers. And, and it's very encouraging to see these numbers. We had the uptick last week that I think, looking back, is probably attributable to the skilled nursing facility outbreak. So the trend, this is the lowest that we've had, well, for the positivity rate and for the case threshold since the governor's new color-coded system. And we are right on the edge of the orange tier, and the trend is in the right direction. So this is very encouraging news. If people just continue doing what they have been doing for the past month, you know, we're, we're on the right trajectory to really reducing disease transmission in the community and potentially reaching the orange tier very, very soon. So I want to encourage people to continue doing. And I, and I think that your strategy about slowing the, the opening of gatherings, the states move to open up gatherings, you know, for our county and our circumstances and our situation, your decision to pause that for a couple of weeks is a really smart decision. I think that we'd love to see us get the, the case rates down into the orange tier before we consider something like that. So thank you for taking the proactive step to do that. Are there, are there questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Levina?
Santa Maria. Thank you very much. Dr. Duranosa, and I saw the numbers, it was reported over the weekend, is 72 new cases. I'm, I'm curious if the outbreak at the Santa Maria acute center has been counted yet? And once again, if we've been able to have a strategy of dealing with the state in somehow, you know, trying to get those numbers discounted because they are inside a, a facility?
Supervisor Levina through the chair. The, to the best of my knowledge, the cases related to the outbreak have been accounted for. And so we did see an uptick, but the rest of the county held steady. So that is why our numbers look solid during this rating period. However, to your question about working with the state, the state does have a adjudication process. So if there was a specific outbreak in an institution where we were involved and where it is under control, the state does allow us to enter into an adjudication process so that the high case rate due to that specific outbreak will not hold us back.
Thank you.
Supervisor Adam?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of deliberation-ish at this point, just comments?
Please.
Okay, so at this point in the pandemic, the information isn't developing as fast as it was in the beginning. And, and, yeah, we were learning a lot. And there was a lot of legitimate, rightful panic in the beginning and, as it should have been. But I, I think at this point, we should have public access to presentation information by at least Friday, as all other items are treated on the, on the agenda. And, you know, as I said earlier, instead supervisors are briefed Monday afternoon on this. And I, I think that that's inadequate time for, for us to prepare and, and digest that information. And I believe that this practice has a chilling effect on public comment and discourages critical review of the data and the conclusions. And I think that we should discontinue this practice and just put it up on Friday afternoon from now on, as everything else is.
Well, I think the challenge with that is that the information is more real-time than that. We're getting information on Monday to be presented to the board on Tuesday. And so that we're getting a preview on Monday. If we were to implement your proposal, we would not have this information until next week. And I don't, I don't know if the community would, would want to exist in that.
As I said, things aren't developing as fast as they were. So in, in, in the public interest, I think it's better to put what you got up on Friday. And if there's, there's late additions, and there often is late additions on many items.
Well, we could put something up on Friday, but it wouldn't be what we see on Monday. It's completely different information. CEO Miyasato?
Supervisors, so I think Chair Hart said it correctly, that we don't get our official numbers from the state until really Tuesday morning, Monday night. And in fact, as you saw, Ms. Duranoso, she's talking about anticipated numbers because the state could change their mind by the time they actually release the numbers. But they give her, her staff a preview, either Monday night or Tuesday morning. But having said that, I was thinking, what information could we make public for Friday so that the public has time to look at it? And I think it would be, it would be either things that we produced for the board the following, the previous Tuesday, or the information that's on our website. Because we, we do updates on our website based on state information. So it would be that information that we actually put on the website, but it could be formatted a little bit different. So we can, Assistant CEO Maznisic, he has been working with Public Health Team on communications and what's on the website, along with the Epi team. We can see what information could be produced. But it may not be what's relevant by the time we get to your board on Tuesday.
Don, we do have, speaking to the public, we do have one speaker slip-in on this item. So, Madam Chair, could you introduce that person?
Chair Hart, members of the board, yes, we have one request to speak on this item, and that is Andy Caldwell.
Chair Hart, members of the board, I'm Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. I was very distressed to hear a statement that was patently false from Director Dean Duranoso this morning. She said that we had worked closely with agriculture. The fact of the matter is, is it wasn't until October 1st that the Public Health Director came to the AAC meeting. And during that meeting, representatives from the growers, shippers, and other ag groups, the Farm Bureau and others peppered her and, and the other person that was making a presentation of why haven't the farmers been invited to be part of the, of these outreach committees? Because none of them have been invited. We've asked plenty of times, and so has Supervisor Adam, who are the people on these task force? Well, they didn't have any farmers on there. The farmers have direct access to their employees, and believe me, they want to keep things safe. I'm glad that Supervisor Adam brought up the fact that it's not work. We don't believe, and neither do a lot of health experts, believe that the agriculturalists are spreading COVID at work. We believe it has to do with their living conditions. You know, Newsom talks about two or three families to now gather at a home. Well, in Santa Maria, you have two or three families living together. The other thing besides this complete failure to work with ag employees is your staff steadfastly refuses to give you updates. For instance, the World Health Organization, which you relied on previously for guidance, is now telling us that we need to reopen our society in all facets because this is disproportionately hurting the poor. The CDC just came out with a study that people that reportedly wear their masks all the time actually have a higher positivity rate. And I, I, a couple of weeks ago, I chided Supervisor Williams through an email because he's always fidgeting with his mask, with his hands. And to make a long story short, I was the Industrial Relations Manager at Union Sugar, and I created our respirator program. And, and what Supervisor Williams and the rest of you are doing, every time you touch your mask with your hands, you're creating self-contamination. You're self-contaminating. Secondly, the materials you're using, you're not, none of you are wearing an N95 mask. And that is the only mask that actually protects against the virus. What you're actually doing, wearing a mask and self-contaminating it, is you actually may be incubating the virus on your mask, vis-à-vis your hands and anything else you touch. And the other thing your staff completely fails to do is consider herd immunity. There should be virtually no focus on college students, except that.
That concludes public comment, and the matters back to the board. That concludes public comment, and the matters back to the board. Supervisor Hartman? Oops, you did not have your light on. Are there any other comments from board members? CEO Miyasato, I heard you.
Supervisors, so I think maybe one issue that I was thinking about, and Mr. Adams can tell us, is that what Dr. Duranoso published today, and I think, I don't think we had a, I think she mentioned it, but I want to just remind everyone, she provided all that data at the beginning of the presentation, and that was part of a monthly quarterly report that the department's been working on, and she presented six, seven months of data. And this is something that they will do every quarter, and that, so this is the first time the board has seen it. It's a lot of data. It's a lot of work that was put into it, and so they wanted to produce this so that your board had it as soon as it got finished. But I think it's so much data that Supervisor Adam is right, that we should provide it to the public ahead of time. So we will endeavor to put the quarterly reports out in a timely manner when the board letter is filed. I think that's fine. I think the things that we talked about to give you relevant updates, we will endeavor to do as much as we can, but most likely, the department won't be able to give anything meaningful to you until the day of the meeting.
Thank you for that. So we'll have two information opportunities. There'll be the Friday, the regular packet that the board gets so the public can see, and then we'll have this update real-time when we get it, and can share that with the public as soon as possible, too. Any other comments on this item? Just want to thank you again, Dr. Duranoso, Ms. Kane, for all the hard work putting together the quarterly report. It's full of information that's very valuable to the community, and we appreciate you being here to share that with us today.
Thank you.
That concludes Departmental Item Number One.